...meeting of the Mesa City Council. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, who joined us for that last meeting. We'll now convene a special council meeting. This meeting is being held to interview and select council members, a new council member for District Three. So we'll look forward to Mr. Thompson joining us on the phone. You're not there yet, are you, Kevin?
I am. Can you hear me?
Oh, great. So, thank you. Kevin, I'm sorry, you missed a fascinating meeting just a moment ago. But I'm sure you'll be talking about it for years, so you'll hear all about it. We are now, though, convening the special council meeting to interview and select a council member for District Three. I will invite the five candidates, I think actually we're down to four candidates, to come up and have a seat. So, ladies and gentlemen, please come forward. And we do have four seats. I know that a moment earlier, city staff met with you and there was a random drawing as to the order in which you're going to be speaking, so I don't know that it's critical, the order that you sit in, but thank you for having a seat. The process will be that each candidate will give a one-minute introductory statement. And again, the order has been randomly selected, and that order will be number one, Mr. Pablo Felix; number two, Francisco Haredia; number three, Ms. Teresa Ratti; and number four will be Frank Meisner. After the opening statements, the council will ask questions of the individual candidates, and the candidate should limit their response to about two minutes. And so we'll let you know when we're -- yeah, I'm going to say two minutes. One minute seems too short. But we're probably not going to turn off your microphone, but if you could, you know, think in terms of two minutes, that would be great. At the conclusion of the questions, each candidate will get a two-minute closing statement. And again, that has been randomly selected, and I'll go over that order at the conclusion. So let's begin with the one-minute introductory statement. Mr. Felix.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
First of all, I want to thank the mayor and the council for the opportunity to participate in this process. I also want to congratulate the other finalists for the commitment to our great city. Mesa's been my home for over 20 years and has proven to be a wonderful place to raise my family. I see that Mesa and District Three specifically have great opportunities to grow, flourish, and renew. From the Fiesta District to Dobson Road and Banner Children's Hospital to our great employers, the possibilities are limitless. I believe we have some work to do as well, but as we listen to diverse voices, engage our communities, and create an environment where an open discussion can take place, great things result. If given the opportunity to be appointed to the Mesa City Council, I commit to work as a team with the city council as we face the challenges of a growing city in the areas that are important to our residents. Much good has been done over the years. I want to build on that success. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Haredia.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, council staff, for the opportunity to be here. My name is Francisco Haredia, and the reason why I applied to fill this vacancy is the role that a council member plays, I believe, is to create this shared responsibility between community and the government institution, and really work towards finding out solutions, having that, create a feedback loop of information, of ideas, and really work towards common sense and pragmatic solutions, to be realistic on what we can accomplish, and work together eventually. If we can't work together, you know, find some common ground to figure out on how we can move Mesa forward. Those are some of the things that I've been doing for most of my adult life, working with coalitions, working with community members, working with elected officials, a broad base of networks throughout this state and across the country to get things done. And this is what I will bring to, if appointed, to the council, and really move forward with the vision that you all have and the staff that work hard to promote that vision, and really move the city and District Three to greater heights in this city. So, thank you for allowing me to be here, and thanks for all my colleagues here being here, so, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Haredia. Ms. Ratti.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council. My name is Teresa Ratti, and I've lived in Mesa, Arizona since 1974. I grew up here with the city and in the city. I'm also a proud teacher in Mesa Public Schools for 28 years, and so I feel that I have a good vision of many pieces of the city and of the district. As a parishioner at St. Timothy's, I was very involved and very knowledgeable of the Dobson Ranch area, which I know is a large piece of the district. I live at the far end of it. I believe I am a good listener. I want to hear what the constituents have to say, and there's so much that can go on in Mesa with growth, with bringing in businesses, and with working cooperatively to better both community and schools. I'm excited to be here. I thank you for this opportunity, and I congratulate my colleagues on getting to this point as well.
Thank you very much. Mr. Meisner.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to be here this morning. As like the rest of the candidates, we appreciate the opportunity to continue our service to the city of Mesa. Having said that, I wish we weren't here. I think we would all agree that this entire process has been troubling and difficult for the city as a whole, for the residents of District Three, for the city council, and most of all, for the family and for Ryan himself. I had great hopes for Ryan as a council member. I thought he would do a good job of representing our district, but as they say in the sports world, it is what it is. Life has consequences, and we have to go on with this process. I think I offer an excellent combination of experience with the city of Mesa, education, and most of all, familiarity with District Three. We've all completed a pretty comprehensive application. Councilmember Whittaker has gathered some additional information, which I hope will be helpful, and I look forward to this interview process. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Okay, so now we'll, I think, have the opportunity for council members to ask questions. Just to make sure that every council member gets that opportunity, I think we'll just start at one end and work our way through, and certainly, there's no necessity for a council member to ask a question, but I just want to make sure everybody gets that opportunity. So, do you mind if we start? Chris, with you, and then we'll just work our way this direction? Thank you.
Thank you. My first question is for Dr. Ratti. Councilmembers are often asked to make decisions on a variety of issues that will impact opposing points of view. Please provide some specific examples of how you've worked to resolve conflicts between individuals and groups.
Within my position, at one point at St. Timothy's, I was on the pastoral council, and we had two different opinions on how we should have an event. And so what I did was I brought the two groups together, and we had discussions about how we would continue with that, and were able to come up with a compromise that was workable. Obviously, in my day-to-day workings with teenagers, there's times where that conflict issue comes out as well. And the biggest thing that I've always found is if I can get them both to sit down and talk to each other instead of just yelling or looking at each other threateningly, that we can get the most done, and that they can realize, oh, I'm not that much different than the other person. So the biggest thing is to have conversations and to bring various points of view together.
Thank you, Dr. Ratti. Thank you. I'm next in line, and I think, again, we're all, we're going to try to ask everybody at least one question, I think, or at least have the opportunity for that. So I'll just move over to Mr. Meisner. Mr. Meisner, you have quite a wealth of experience with the city of Mesa, and so I'm curious, I'm fascinated to hear your answer to this question. Would you please describe what you would consider to be the biggest near-term challenges for the city of Mesa?
Well, there are a number of issues before the city council. I think both in the near and the long term, the challenge for the city council and the organization as a whole is to maintain our financial stability. For many years, our strategy in Mesa was to rely on profits from our utility company and frankly, capturing sales tax revenue from other communities by having the largest retail centers and retail centers along our borders. That doesn't work anymore. Our neighboring communities have their own retail centers. We can't raise utility rates indefinitely, and so I think the city of Mesa has some structural challenges in terms of our revenues as balanced against the demand for city services. And it's a difficult issue. We have a tradition in Mesa of nonexistent or very low property taxes. I think that's something to be proud of, but at the same time, we're faced with challenges from our residents that want a certain quality of life and a certain level of city services. So I think that's going to represent a significant short-term challenge for the city.
Thank you.
Francisco. The mayor and city council value the community benefits of participating in regional and national discussions. Please share with council which areas of regional or national significance is important to you and why it's important to the city of Mesa.
I think that's a good question. I think it's important to, as I was talking to residents and people here in the district, it's important to understand the level of Mesa, and some people didn't understand, you know, Mesa is the third-largest city in the state. Mesa has the largest school district in the state. Mesa has the largest, you know, community college in the state. Those are really great assets to have, and really, to promote those assets across the region, across the city, and across the country, to ensure that we work together as one, to highlight those and pursue opportunities that will create a better Mesa for the future, for our next generations. Pursue, how do we, for instance, on the education, how do we promote pipelines to those assets, right, to make, from Mesa Public Schools to Mesa Community College to technical schools that are here in this, in the city and across the valley? So those kinds of things that we need to lift up, that people are familiar but might not know where Mesa's at, and really, you know, promote the great assets that we have for the city. I think that's what I will bring to this council, a fresh perspective, how we can promote that, those assets across our city and across the state and across the country, to ensure that we keep on the continued growth that we have moving forward.
Hi there, all the candidates. Thank you for coming this morning.
Thank you.
My question's for Mr. Felix. As a temporary council member, and what would you envision your goals and priorities if you were selected as a council member? How would you focus, or how would you create a goal and work with constituents, not only District Three, but your council members?
Great question, council member. I think the biggest thing that I would do is engage District Three as quickly as possible, identify the stakeholders within the district. I've been living in the district for almost 20 years, so I have a feel for it, but I'm not going to make any assumptions. I think some key areas, obviously, the Dobson Corridor, the Fiesta District is a big piece in my mind, the economic impact that it has and as it's developing. So my initial thoughts are to meet with the stakeholders, identify a plan, a quick plan to work around, and move forward for the next year as this appointment's for a year. And really work hard in tandem with you, and involve the chambers of commerce, any organization that has a say, or as they say, skin in the game for District Three, to find out what is it that needs to be accomplished. Tell me how I can help out. How can I facilitate that? I feel as a council member, I will have the opportunity to be a catalyst and a driver of that process on here, and also be a voice to those folks. There's definitely segments in the district that maybe have not felt that their voice is heard, and I'm willing to engage those, engage all of them, even if I say Spanish a little bit. But I think if you have that ability to engage the stakeholders in business, in education, the neighborhoods, I think, put that plan together, move forward, that'd be my ideal situation. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for coming out today. My question is also for Pablo. You know, I reached out to all the candidates, and I had asked all of you to set aside 30 minutes. I believe the request was made last week, and you couldn't find 30 minutes to respond to a questionnaire. If you can't find 30 minutes in a week, what makes you think that you'll have the time to serve the constituents of District Three?
You know, councilman, very valid question. Valid question, and I appreciate you bringing it up. Unfortunately, I had some personal issues the first part of the week. Weekend, I was in Los Angeles for a funeral with family. That took a little priority to that. I had to drive my parents, who were elderly, and I was out for two days. And then when I came back, I worked for a corporate organization that requires focus on some things that we had to initiate, and unfortunately, Dave was gone yesterday. So from one meeting internally to external meetings, the time went away. But valid question, as I mentioned. It's a question of prioritizing and shuffling things again. I was not expecting something else. You and I had an engagement where we exchanged some ideas on email. Was kind of surprised, but I welcome it in the future and know that if I get a request from you specifically and the constituents, that I need to manage that a little bit better. And moving forward, I'll do a better job at that.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, would you like to ask a question?
Absolutely. I would actually, I would like to ask all of the candidates, and I'm going a little off-script here, but if each of you would tell me, or tell us as a council, who you really are, what are your hobbies, what are your likes, what are your dislikes, what do you like engaging on, and why do you really want to be considered for this position? So you can start wherever you want to start, you know, whoever wants to take that, but I'd like to hear from each of you. Tell us a little bit about you and who you are, what you bring to the table.
Okay, Kevin, just because we're following a two-minute routine, why don't you pick one, and then we'll, when it's your turn again, we'll have the next person ask, just so we maintain the order. So I'm saying, let's do exactly what you proposed, but we're going to do them one at a time, okay?
Okay. Let's go with Pablo, then. Mr. Felix.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, you know, I think the first thing that comes to mind, I love my family, and I hang out with them all the time. I jokingly say, if we go to Walmart, we all go to Walmart. We all jump into Suburban, so I'm a big family man, and extended family in Phoenix and in Mexico. So my life outside work is primarily in family dinners, birthday parties, celebrations. Personally, I like to golf. I am an avid Sun Devil fan, so I get along to those sports as long as I can, as many opportunities I can get. But more anything, I like to spend my time with my wife and serving the community we live in. My wife works for the Whittier Elementary, so she kind of pulls me in once in a while, hey, I need your help with this, and I go in. I recently joined, a couple months ago, the Carson Junior High PSYAC, so I participate there as well. But more anything, I enjoy being around my children and mentoring them and coaching them. For a while, I served as a Boy Scout leader, a youth leader in my church, campouts, mentoring, shepherding them, so to speak. It was always enjoyable. They come to me and they say, hey, Mr. Felix, what would you do here? And I love to have those conversations. But also have a fascination for media, television and media. I worked in that area for about 15 years, so I'm always looking for opportunities to learn more about social media, television. I love to watch commercials, which is weird. I don't fast forward to commercials. I tell my wife, wow, did you see that creative on this? That is so great. Did you see what they did here? And she says, you're such a geek in that sense. But, you know, outside the house, I like to golf, I like to play soccer, I like to play football and basketball. I mean, I just try to be active.
Sorry, thank you. And Kevin, great questions, but like I say, just so we maintain order, we'll just come right back to that at the next end round. Mr. Glover, thank you.
Excuse me. Mr. Meisner, if you're appointed, are you interested in running for the seat in District Three next year?
Well, it's a good question, and I figured that might come up this morning. As I recall, the last opportunity for city council to fill a vacancy was when Deana Higgins moved out of the community and Mr. Luna was selected. That same question was asked at that time, and as I recall, Mr. Luna's response was, I need to find out a little bit more about city council and see what the responsibilities and duties are before I make up my mind. So that response seemed to work for him at the time, and I think I'll go with it.
Genius. Thank you. That's probably the best answer we're going to get all morning. Sucking up is a nice quality to have in a council member.
Good talent sometimes.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'm going to ask the same question that I asked Mr. Meisner earlier, which, and Ms. Ratti, if you could address this question. Please describe what you would consider to be the biggest near-term challenges for the city of Mesa.
I believe at this point, we're still, now that the economy has turned around, bringing in more businesses, taking that both downtown area and then heading west on the light rail, bringing in industry residential, small businesses to enliven that piece of Mesa, as well as continuing to work with all of our education partners and establish pipelines from Mesa Public Schools, Benedictine, MCC, the Community College District, to keep our students engaged and keep them moving forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Meisner, as a council member, you may not always agree with your colleagues on the city staff on an issue. How would you handle these types of conflicts while maintaining respect for your colleagues and staff?
It's a good question.
And you're in a unique position because you were staff. Now you're going to be in a different position.
I was. In fact, I did some rough calculations last night, and I figured between 15 years of planning director with all the study sessions and council meetings, twice monthly planning and zoning board meetings, six years on the planning commission, including two years as chair, I figured I probably attended 1,000 meetings in this building, either here or upstairs. So I've sat here, although the furniture's a little bit different. I've sat over there, and I've sat upstairs. Any effort or any committee, board, is going to have some conflict, and I think that's healthy. I think it's good to have divergent viewpoints. The challenge, as you mentioned, is for the board members or the committee members or the council members to maintain that level of respect, listen to other opinions, and then make an informed decision. I think that's the crux of any successful organization. I think I've demonstrated that over the years in terms of my service on the Planning and Zoning Board, on a number of other local boards and committees, on the Dobson Ranch Board. I think all those experiences have enabled me to function well in a team environment, maintaining my independent opinions and reaching informed decisions.
Thank you for that response. My question's for Mr. Haredia. What do you feel is the biggest near-term challenges that we may experience as a city?
I think twofold. One, at the district level, I think District Three, we have light rail cutting through the district. How do we support our small businesses? How do we provide technical assistance to them, ensure that they are able to prosper? Fiesta District area, you know, a lot of conversations, a lot of plans have been happening for a number of years there. I remember my wife saying, she grew up in Tempe, you know, Fiesta Mall was the hit place to be in the early 90s, mid-90s. How do we bring that vitality back to the Fiesta District, really work towards that goal with the business owners, all the different stakeholders, that we can improve that district moving forward? You know, how do we create pipelines, like Teresa was mentioning, on education through the various assets that we have around education? Mesa Community College is being one of the most important ones. How do we, how do we work, keep on working with them to pursue those pipelines? And the twofold on the city side is downtown, right? The ideas around downtown, how do we create synergies around the various different districts? I think the downtown core is important. The city center idea is an idea that I think could flourish. I think we need to bring people along, understand the process, be transparent, and ensure that they buy into the work that we're doing here in the city to move, again, move Mesa forward and keep on progressing. Thank you.
My next question's for Frank. Frank, you worked at the city for a number of years. Can you name your top three issues as a council member that you would push as initiatives that you would disagree with city staff on?
That I would disagree with city staff?
Yes, disagree.
Well, one that comes to mind is the city's Clean Sweep program. This was an effort a few years ago to enlist volunteers, city of Mesa, ordinary citizens, who went through some training and received a badge, and basically were empowered to go out and pick up illegal signs in the city of Mesa. The bandit signs that appear on the weekend that seem to sprout like mushrooms, queenset mattresses, real estate investors, things like that. We had a nice group, and we covered the entire city. There were probably 10 or 12 of us that would go out on the weekends and during the week on our own time. There were limitations. We didn't pick up large signs. We didn't go on private property, but these were all in the city right-of-way. I enjoyed that because I think those kinds of signs are a blight on our environment. That program was discontinued a couple years, and I looked into it, I talked to people, and frankly, I never got a satisfactory answer as to why it was discontinued. So I would like to see that reinstated, and I enjoyed participating in that. As far as disagreeing with city staff, I haven't had much opportunity to do that. Since retiring from the city and being involved with Dobson Ranch, we've had a great relationship with the city of Mesa. Most recently, when we had those two storms in August that dumped so much rain and damaged so many trees and private property situations, city crews were out at midnight that night cutting trees and clearing trees off streets, helping residents with their individual properties. We, as an organization, have expressed our appreciation to the city, and it's worked out great. We've also worked cooperatively with the city in terms of landscaping along Dobson Road. Many of our residents think Dobson Road is part of Dobson Ranch because it's really sort of our main street, but in fact, the right-of-way, the center meeting, all the landscaping belongs to the city of Mesa. Years ago, we paid for trees and the city planted those. Most recently, the city has initiated its own beautification program. We very much appreciated that, and it helps not only Dobson Ranch, but all the residents that drive along Dobson Road. So overall, I would say, while I don't always and didn't always agree 100% with city staff and frankly, with city council decisions all the time, I think it's important to support those decisions as we move into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson, would you like to direct the previous question to someone else or ask a different question?
Absolutely. I'll go to Teresa. Teresa, tell us who you are. Tell us about you. What are your hobbies, what are your likes, dislikes, and so forth?
Thank you very much. As I said, I'm a teacher, Mesa Public Schools, and that's my love and that's my hobby, and those are my kids. 25 years at Mesa High, so I am, even though I graduated from Seton, I am an avid Jack Rabbit. And it's a little difficult teaching at Westwood now, for those of you that know the stories and the rivalries. But I am also now a proud Warrior. So going to, being involved in school events, whether it be performing arts or sports, I am a proud Sun Devil, and so as often as I can, I go to events at ASU. And I have been recently active in the SOS campaign, collecting signatures over the summer on the Save Our Schools campaign, and we were able to get over 111,000 signatures submitted. So that's who I am. I also am very involved in my church. I love to sing. I have an extensive collection of extended family of friends who are here in the valley and around the state. Both of my parents are deceased, so it's me and the family I have created for myself. So that's a brief overview of me.
Great. Thank you.
This question's for Mr. Felix. As you look at what the council's done over the last five years, what policy decision or vote that we have taken, do you disagree with and why?
You know, it's a great question, and I really don't have a straight answer for you. I'll be upfront and transparent with you. I've followed the council. I've seen some of the decisions it made, but to remember specifically a particular vote, I would be not truthful to tell you that I do know. But what I have seen is that the council has come together and worked together. What I have seen is that there's been opposing views in the thought process that each of you have, and stakeholders in your own districts, but I've seen it come together and make a vote. And many of those I've seen have been unanimous. Moving forward, if I'm given the opportunity to do that, I may have a thought process or an idea that you may disagree, or the mayor may disagree with me, but we can find a way to work together and be united and move forward with that.
Thank you. Mr. Haredia, I note in your work experience a lot of community engagement experience. So my question for you is, how will you best communicate? How will you use your experience or the ideas maybe that you bring with you from that experience to improving communication between the council member and the district, District Three?
For sure, yeah. As I stated in my initial comments, I think the council member's role is really to create that feedback loop of information, of ideas, of conversations, and the best way to do that is personal contact and really work with individuals to, you know, see what their understanding of the process is and ensure that they understand and get their feedback on what they see as needs and wants for themselves and their on what they see as needs and wants for themselves and their community on a given issue. For me, that's been the work that I've been doing, working with diverse set of people with ideas, different partisan leanings, and different communities in general throughout the state, throughout the country, to coalesce around common ground and really work towards our common ground. We might disagree, agree to disagree, different strategies and tactics, but how we can move forward on the commonalities that we have as individuals, as it pertains to the issue, I really feel that, for me, my experience has really been that personal contact in engaging with people at the community level, at the grassroots level, to ensure that we understand where people are coming from, and they understand where we're coming from as well. You know, if lucky, appointed as a council member to share that vision and process of the work that's happening, and hopefully, we can then work together to progress on those issues.
Thank you.
Mrs. Reddy, Dr. Reddy, Dr. Reddy, I apologize. As you look at council, what they've done in the last five years, what policy decision vote would you have disagreed on and why?
I am, because of the private prison industry outside of the connection with misdemeanor issues here in Mesa, when I look at that, I look at a system that I don't feel is as secured as the state system. And so without knowing a great deal, without having a lot of the background information that you had, that, as a citizen, looking at that, that's the one that I disagree with because I feel like I'm not sure how safe it is. And if we really want to get into privatizing prisons, and then, you know, we look at privatizing a lot of other things that have usually or have always been in public control.
My question is also for Dr. Reddy. Again, this call follows up with Mr. Luna's, but how would you best communicate with the residents within District Three?
I would be out there in the community. I'd like to have, like, a meet-your-council person at the Dobson Ranch Library, going to different events at schools, HOAs, those types of things, as well as the pancake breakfast, working with the fire department, to have those type of events within the district to get to know people, to get to meet people and see them. You know, high school sporting events are always a great place where you have a lot of people from the neighborhood there, or the school carnivals, and just let it, and, you know, be visible, let people know that I'm going to be there, because I'd rather have a conversation within people's neighborhoods than necessarily having office hours here, which in a teacher's schedule probably wouldn't work very well anyway.
My next question is for Frankie. Frankie, if the city finds itself in a position where it can't balance its budget, and you have the ability to amortize debt in an extended period of time, say 10 years, at the cost of $500 million, do you choose to make cuts to the budget to maintain a balanced budget, or do you choose to amortize the debt?
It's a great question. I think, you know, for city council, the decision all leads back to the budget and figuring out, we have a balanced budget that we can work towards ensuring that programs are there and that our needs are covered as far as public safety, as far as, you know, having clean water and infrastructure needs there. I first want to make sure that those needs are covered and look at ways on how we can bring in additional revenue if possible. If that's not possible, we have to make tough decisions to what cuts we have to make, but all with the frame of how do we balance those cuts throughout the city, throughout the budget that we have in working with. So that would be my response to that.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes, Francisco, same question that I've been asking. Tell us about you, who you are, what are your hobbies, your likes and dislikes?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm two, I have three young kids, two boys and a baby girl. I'm a family man. A lot of the extracurricular activities that I do is for my kids. They just started soccer. We play at Dobson High School every Saturday. So every Saturday from now to December, early mornings, I'm out there cheering for my two boys. Also, they love baseball and football and all sports. I'm an avid sports fan as well, diehard Sun Devil, twice graduated from there, try to go to football games as much as possible and other events around the ACU community. And really, my passion has been my service. I've worked for organizations and also volunteered my time to bring people who are permanent residents to apply for citizenship and go through that process and ensure that they are then registered to vote and participate in the democratic process of this country, ensuring that they have a voice in their local communities and across the state. So those types of volunteers I always seek and ensure that we, my family and my kids see me as a role model, hopefully, for how they can act as they grow up. So that, those are my things. Most of the time is spent with my family, my wife, she works at a nonprofit in Central Phoenix, and she dragged me to events and other places that I'm lucky to have her. So thank you.
Frankie, again, sorry that you, it's the third question in a row, but can you provide us some specific examples of how you work to resolve conflict between individuals or groups?
Yeah, I think it goes back, as I've been saying, the being transparent and ensuring that people understand process. My experience, my work experience has led me to see that when we understand process of behind-the-scenes information, I think we get a better light of what's really going on and be able to understand what led to the decisions to be made. And again, we can then agree to disagree on the strategy and tactics, but, you know, ensuring that we have communication, constant communication, that we're transparent, and that we work towards those goals, those are imperative to, that I see how we can resolve those conflicts. And to move forward, you know, if we disagree at that time, that shouldn't preclude us on how we can work on additional issues moving forward because as a, if lucky, again, to be on the council, that's what we need to be doing. And we might disagree this time, but let's see how we can work together moving forward and always keep that camaraderie amongst each other to improve our local communities and our great city here.
Mr. Felix, same question that I asked Mr. Heredia a moment ago. You have a background in media? So again, I think this is a good question. I'm anxious to hear your answer. How will you communicate as a council member? What are the best tools that you're going to look for to use to improve and have robust communication between the council member and the residents of District Three?
There are, since I got into media in 95, and I've been out of it maybe about five years, media has grown so much and has become very diverse, the way we consume media as a person, as people, you know. Initially, it was just radio, TV, and newspaper. Newspaper is definitely taking a turn, going digital. Social media has blown up. So putting a plan together, there are abilities to target through messaging through social media. I would utilize that mainly, be it the Instagrams, the Snapchats, the Facebooks of the world. But I think there's a lot of communication can be done over television, internet. But ultimately, the best type of communication is face-to-face. When you sit there and you press the flesh, I think media overall gives a targeted or broadcast element to it, gives you a brand, so to speak. I hope to build that brand within District Three. But ultimately, as you sit there and you come across residents, they recognize you from your Facebook, they recognize you from any type of interview, they recognize you from anything that's out there. So there are ways of putting a media plan together, find out what that consumption is, but there are definitely lots of tools to go out there. And I plan to use my experience in media and having consulted in that area to benefit the district, and not only communicate out, but to receive information back, to be able to come back and say, you know what, I get this. And ultimately, I'll do it in two languages, Spanish and English, to be able to get folks to feel comfortable in sharing their thoughts.
Thank you.
Mr. Felix?
Yes, Mr. Luna.
As you look at what council has done in the past five years, what policy decisions votes would you disagree with and why?
Well, Mr. Glover alluded to that right now, you know, what is out there, and some thoughts have come to my mind since then. I would have to, Ms. Reddy touched upon the prison, the contract that was extended out. I see it, I saw the reason why it was done, because it's financial. I'm sensitive to the feelings of those that are participating in that process in the sense that, you know, people may feel that they're being targeted, but ultimately, the business of the city council and the city is to make best use of their funds. I see myself, if appointed to the council, as a steward of tax dollars, and sometimes you have to make those tough decisions that are maybe not as popular. Do I agree with the decision? I actually do agree with that decision because ultimately, the best way to do it, and there was a lot of discussion on the pros and the cons, and you have to do that analysis, and when you, pros overcome the cons, even though there might be some cons, and ultimately, money is saved. I think that decision is correct.
So my question about was, what policy decision did you disagree with, not that you agree with? You may not have one, so that's fine, too.
You know, I don't. I'll be honest with you, I don't.
Thank you, Paul. My question for Mr. Meisner. Obviously, we're going through a healing process, kind of your opening statements, not only for city, but for District Three, and I think it's important that the next council member look at ways they can heal their district. So what would be some of your priorities or goals within District Three if you were selected as a council member?
Thank you for the question. I think that is an important part of this whole process. It's also important to remember that whoever's selected today, I believe you used the term earlier temporary council member, but I prefer the term interim, that sounds a little bit better, but whoever gets picked is not elected by the people, not by the residents of District Three. So that puts whoever's picked in a little different role. We've been without a representative for, what, five months now, and that's a great source of frustration for the residents of District Three. I know you all take citywide perspectives under consideration, not just your own district, but still, the feeling in our district is that we're not represented, and there are a number of outstanding issues. Some have been mentioned, the light rail corridor, redevelopment of Fiesta Mall, the growing Asian-oriented community along Dobson Road. Those are important issues, not just for District Three, but for the city as a whole, but we don't have a voice in the community. I think it's important for whoever gets picked to reach out to the community, let folks know that we do have a representative, that their concerns will be communicated to the city council, and that they will be represented. On a personal level for District Three, there are a couple of things that I'm concerned about. I think our code enforcement efforts for the city have been pretty lax the last, really eight or 10 years since the budget has been in difficulty. And I think that's reflected in the proliferation of illegal signs, lax code enforcement in residential neighborhoods. I think that effort needs to be beefed up, and I think there are many positive aspects of that. One other issue unique to District Three, I'm an avid bike rider, and when I ride along the Western Canal, our border with Chandler, I look to the south and I see where Chandler has installed landscaping, bike paths, lighting fixtures, nice walls. We have nothing on the north side, and that's our window of Mesa for many, many people, not just bike riders, but people that drive along Country Club, Alma School, and Dobson. Whether it's a cooperative effort with the landowners, we have an SRP easement and a canal in that area and power lines, so I know there are some practical difficulties, but I'd really like to see that Western Canal improved as our border with Chandler.
My next question is for Teresa. Teresa, thank you for answering the question about a policy that you disagree with council. On that same topic, there's multiple things in the city that could potentially be privatized, police, fire, electric, water, gas, jails. Can you name one department that you believe you could in fact privatize, or is it your belief that no city service should ever be privatized?
I don't believe we need to be privatizing it, excuse me, any of the positions because we've got a budget and a city that's based on our funding that comes in from our utilities. And so at least as far as city water and those services, we need to keep that as part of the city and run and owned by the city because it is a huge source of our funding. And I think some of this comes from, you know, working in the public sector, that I don't think that privatizing everything, or education, or fire and police, is going to be the best in our interest or in the interest of Mesa as a whole.
Mr. Thompson.
Frank, you're on the hot seat. Tell us who you are, tell us a little about you, what are your hobbies, your likes, dislikes? You know, trying to get a perspective of who we're going to be working with.
Yes, it's not a hot seat. It's a privilege to be here this morning for all of us. On a professional level, my entire career has been in public service. I've worked for city and county governments in Texas, in Colorado. I came here to be planning director in Gilbert, and then I served for 15 years for the City of Mesa. I've been involved in a number of other organizations and served on committees and boards, Mesa United Way, Mesa YMCA, Mesa Leadership and Training Development Program, Valley Forward. I've been resident of District Three for 30 years. I've been very active in the Dobson Ranch community. When I left the City of Mesa, I became executive director there for three years. I'm in my third term on their board of directors, in my second year as president of that board. I've had homes on the garden tour, I've served on a variety of committees there at Dobson Ranch, so I have a long record of public involvement. On a personal level, I don't want to be too polarizing here, but I'm a strong supporter of the University of Arizona. In fact, I had my wildcat tie on this morning. I was told that might be a bit polarizing, so I went more conservative, but I'm not bashful about it. I like outdoor activities. I'm an avid bike rider and walker and a very frequent pickleball player. If you don't know what that is, Google it. It's a great sport, play probably five or six times a week. I love Mesa, I love Dobson Ranch, and I think all of my experience, my work experience, my professional involvement, my personal involvement, my education have prepared me for this job of serving on the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Okay, I think that, does that, everyone's had an opportunity, I think, to ask four questions, so I think we've made it through the rounds, but I don't want to cut anybody off. Is there any additional questions that council would like to ask before we move to the closing statements? Okay, if that's the case, then we'll proceed now with the closing statements, and again, we've asked you to plan on using two minutes for this. We did ask for two minutes, didn't we? Okay, good. And again, we cast lots earlier for the order. We're going to go Mr. Felix, Mr. Heredia, Mr. Meisner, and conclude with Ms. Reddy. So, Mr. Felix.
Thank you, Mayor. When I decided to pursue this appointment, I had many friends ask me, what would I do if I had the privilege to serve in the Mesa City Council? I began to envision District Three as it is and embrace the incredible potential of the Fiesta District and the Dobson Road corridor. Most residents agree that they want safe and a great place to live, a good job and the opportunity for one, and great schools so their kids can have a bright future. Our residents want great neighborhoods, they want a city that's beautiful and vibrant, they want jobs, and I believe I can contribute to this. My whole life, I've worked to make things happen and not sit on the sidelines. My whole life, I've worked to make things happen and not sit on the sidelines. I've learned how to drive a successful process in the order, in order to receive successful project outcomes. I have over 22 years of corporate experience in America, in corporate America, and I know how to work well with people with different, different mindsets and different views to reach the similar goal. If I don't know the answer or how to solve it, I look for insight from my experienced colleagues, as well examine best practices. If appointed, I commit to work with my council colleagues in providing efficient government and continue to run the city in a fiscally responsible manner. District Three and Mesa residents require that we continue to provide excellent and efficient city services, a well-funded public safety, and most importantly, a vision for the future. I love people and I want them to be successful, and as we have successful residents and families, we will have a successful city. Let's help people achieve their dreams and aspirations. I think we could do this together, working together. I respectfully ask for your support to be appointed to serve as your next councilman for District Three and begin and work immediately to build a better Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felix. Mr. Haredia?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, council staff, for the opportunity to be here. I want to step back a little bit and just explain my personal story and what has led me to be here where I'm at now. I come from immigrant, immigrant family. My parents came to this country from Mexico to work and pursue the American dream, like many millions before them, many millions after them, and, and they did that for us, me and my brother and my sister, really working, they came as migrant farm workers, they worked in Arizona and California picking crops. And what they instilled in me is a, is a foundation of values that I deeply have in my heart as I pursue my, my goals in life. These values of, of family and faith, education, of treating others like we want to be treated, hard work and perseverance, eventually work in your favor, which they, it has for me, and that, and that we, a Spanish word that I use is ganas, having the gumption and willpower to make things happen, not only for yourself, but for, for others. And, and those values really, for me, is, are essential and something that I will bring to this, this council, council seat if, if lucky. And added with my experience, at one point, I, my studies at ASU, I wanted to become a city manager and really work and understand those, and wrote thesis on water treatment plants in rural communities. And really, from that background with my professional experience and working with, with diverse set of people across this community, across the state and across the country, I really learned on honing in on the strategies on how we get things done. I'll be ready from day one, of course, of learning, of listening and, and working hard to, to again, move Mesa forward and make this community that I fell in love with, that I moved in, a, a part of, of the fabric that we, we, we want to aspire to for the city. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Meisner?
Well, again, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I think we all appreciate that. This has been a, a pretty fast-moving process, and maybe that's good. So we'll get somebody appointed and, and have a representative for District Three. You've had a chance to get to know us a little bit and ask a wide variety of questions, so I hope that will help you during your process. District Three is a very diverse district in the city of Mesa. We have some, a wide variety of industrial, commercial, residential neighborhoods. I know District Three. I've been involved in land use and zoning decisions throughout the district. I served on a city, excuse me, a Mesa Public School Committee that adjusted boundaries. I used to tell people that if you thought zoning hearings were contentious, wait till we start talking school boundaries. So that was an interesting process, but it enabled me to learn about schools as well as the city. I spent most of the day last Saturday driving District Three, nearly every street. We're really spread out. It's everything from Mesa's western boundary along Baseline Road all the way to Lindsay and northward all the way to Riverview Park. We have some of our largest commercial areas, including Fiesta Quadrant, we have large industrial areas along Baseline and US 60, and as I said, we have a wide variety of residential neighborhoods, some that are structured and I think quite healthy, such as Dobson Ranch where I live and that I'm proud to serve. But we also have many other neighborhoods that are not organized and that frankly are showing their age, and I think that's one of the real challenges for District Three, not, not just District Three, but the city as a whole, but for our district in particular, we have large neighborhoods that are showing their age, that don't have an organized structure, and I think there's a role for the city of Mesa in helping those neighborhoods. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity. I want to serve on the City Council. I see this as the acme of my public service career. I ran for City Council back in 2004. That was the situation where Dennis Kavanaugh was term limited and was, was thrown off the ballot by the courts. I used to tell people that I, I ran a, a good campaign, we finished in the black, we had a nice party that evening, and I was sort of glad that I didn't win because I know how much work it is. But I, I'm retired now, I have the time to do this, and I have the energy and the knowledge of the district where I think I can be a good representative for District Three. Again, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to serving the District Three and I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Meisner. Ms. Raddi?
Hi, thank you again, Mr. Mayor and council. I am honored to be here and to have been selected to get to this, this point in the process. As someone who has lived in District Three, District Three for an extensive amount of time, and to be at the, that far east end that is part, almost part of that industrial corridor that is baseline, with our industries, with our food bank, it's, we've got to keep it all together. We have Dobson Ranch, which is, has always been a thriving area, an aging area, which a lot of Mesa is. One of the things that I would like to do is, is engage our youth, bring the, bring the youth into the city, bring the youth in to see what do they want. I realize that age-wise Mesa's an older community, but if we don't engage the kids, we're, we're going to be losing out. I look forward to learning this, I believe I am a good learner, and I look forward to working with, with people, with learning about what's going on in the, in the community as well as learning the position. I would like to serve with the council and for the city. I've done a lot of service in the, in Mesa and in the East Valley and want to continue that by being on the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, my compliments to everyone. I think you've, you've all represented yourself very, very well, and I'm, I'm proud of our city and proud that we have folks like you that, to choose from, so this is going to be a tremendously hard decision, so thank you. You, you all did a wonderful job. The next item on our agenda is to convene an executive session to discuss and consider the District Three council member appointments. Is there a motion to that effect? Yes, I'm sorry, please. No one has submitted a blue card, is that correct? Okay, thank you. So is there a motion to convene an executive session? Thank you. And a second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Thank you. So we'll have a, an executive session and then we will reconvene here to take further action. Thank you. Mr. Thompson, do we have you on the telephone?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Okay, thank you. The exec, the executive session has concluded and we are now reconvening the study session. Our next item is the appointment of a District Three council member. Before we proceed with that motion, I just want to again express my appreciation to everyone that applied for this position. As was evidenced by the, the really high quality of the individuals that we just interviewed, I think that, to me, this is, is a great confirming experience of what a great community we live in and, and the level of talent that's in our city and in particularly to District Three. So, so thank you very much. We would have been very well-served with, with, if any of the, the folks that we just interviewed was selected to, to serve on our council. So congratulations to them for doing such a great job, and, and thank you so much for everyone who has, has hung with us throughout this process. This has been a few months in, in, in coming to this point, and it's been a very regretting, not anything that any of us wanted to do, but I am proud of the way that the council and our community has responded to this. So having said that, council, would someone like to make a motion or proceed with discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. I move to appoint Francisco Haredia to council member District Three for the city of Mesa.
I second the motion.
Thank you. There's been a motion and a second to appoint Francisco Haredia to the District Three council member position. Is there any discussion before we vote? All right, everyone, all in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so yeah, just so we're clear, Mr. Thompson, you're, you're voting against the motion, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So that motion passes five to one. So congratulations, Mr. Haredia. We will now adjourn this meeting because we were in a special council meeting to appoint this person. Is there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
To be sworn in by the clerk?
We're going to do that during the course of this meeting?
We need to do it now because he's going to be sitting as a council member because we want him to hear everything there is to know about employee benefits.
Okay. All right. All right, so we'll wait to conclude, did this will occur here on the side of the room? So?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution involves the state of Arizona.
The Constitution involves the state of Arizona.
That bears true faith.
And the regions are the same.
The regions are the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and partially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
The office of council member District Three.
Office of council member District Three.
Of the city of Mesa, Arizona.
Of the city of Mesa, Arizona.
According to the rest of my ability.
According to the rest of my ability.
To help the county.
To help the county.
Thank you, and, and welcome, council member Haredia. So I think that does conclude the business for this meeting. I'd now entertain a motion to conclude the special council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Luna, is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Glover, all in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the special council meeting is, is adjourned and we will